It never, it used to be my gig. I don't know if you weren't here before.
No, no, he became chair.
I, I, before I was the chair, I was the motion man. It's, 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 it's the stepping stone, so be careful.
I know, they can come by his chair.
Next thing you know, you end up your vice chair and then you'll be vice chair and I'll be out and he'll be the chair. You can't escape it.
I have a large policy telling boards when I get on, I'm not going to be the chair of this. Don't, don't expect.
This is intriguing. It is. Interested to.
I'm curious to hear more.
Yeah. Am I mic? My mic is live. I'm gonna go ahead and start. This is the. I just turned it on. Yeah. This is the Camden Planning Board meeting, January 12, 2023. We have some items on the agenda, mostly a pre-application meeting for a subdivision and development. So first I'll ask if there are any public comments on non-agenda items? And semi-public coming from Jeremy.
I just wanted to let you know, we do have, obviously only four planning board members here. Full board membership is five, full members, two alternates. And right now we've got three full members and one alternate, Mark Murray being the alternate. Andy Smith, who I knew needed to remove, be removed from the board, remove himself from the board, and the select board kept him on the last time. We did get an email from him. He is asked to be.
Did no longer.
This time, they're trying to keep him on. So Andy's gone, unfortunately. He's, I thought, brought a lot to the, to the table, but his, his work doesn't enable him to do this any longer. We do have two people submitted to be on the planning board, actually three, but our zoning board is quite low. We only have one person right now on the zoning board of appeals. So that's unfortunate, but John Cole is, his name is going to the select board on Tuesday, and he's actually in the audience. He's right there. He's asked to be on the planning board. He does bring some experience as a planner in Breckenridge, Colorado, and Naples, Florida. And he's here, and just letting the applicant know, he's technically not part of the board, but this is a pre-app meeting. And he's taking, you know, he's here, he's listening. And he will be appointed next Tuesday and likely will probably come to the site visit and be part of the meetings moving forward.
Don't push him out of the way on the way out the door.
And then Lucia Decordre is another person who submitted for tasks to be on the planning board or zoning board. I'm recommending the select board that they put her onto the planning board. She is, she owns a bed and breakfast in town, her, she and her husband. She's a former planner in Northern Virginia and also worked in the private sector in planning as well. So I think she brings another good, good experience to the board as well.
Up here, we could use some experience.
And I, she may, she was planning on coming today, but if not, I will, she will follow up and review the planning of this meeting, which is being recorded. And hopefully you guys are okay with that. I did talk to the town attorney to make sure it was okay, and as long as we talked about it and the applicants were okay, they were good. So she'll participate moving forward as well, along with John.
Great.
That's all I have.
Good work. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah. And if anyone knows of anyone that would like to be on the zoning board, we need some members.
Still room for another alternate, right?
There's still room for another alternate on this.
So all, all you viewers out there on YouTube, it's an open casting call for planning board and zoning board of adjustment.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeremy.
Yep.
We will now move on to the primary order of business subdivision of land. And we have the applicants here representing Nordhaven Camden. And typically what we'll do here is we'll have a, this is a public informational meeting and a pre-application meeting altogether in one. So what we'll do is we'll have, generally we'll introduce the project, I think. Are you, are you doing that or is Jeremy doing that?
I can do it. She can do it.
I don't know which, whether the baton has passed. You can watch.
Slowly being passed, but.
I thought you'd be like chucking it. Right. So we'll hear from the, from our planning group, from the town, and then, then we'll have an opportunity to hear from the applicants and we'll learn more about your project. And then we will go forward from there. I understand that there were some requested conditions, waivers.
Yeah, we'll just get into those, I think.
We'll get into all that later.
And then there's also a public information meeting that has to happen within 30 days of this meeting.
Oh, that's not, okay.
We're doing, the plan is, is that we're doing that tonight, and that's how it was advertised.
Right. That's, we're combining the two.
Correct.
Yep. And then we'll probably be setting a site visit at some point.
Yeah, we need, do need to do that, and that site visit has to happen within two weeks of 14 days of this meeting. So I think we're hoping to try to do that next week, to be honest with you, next Thursday is the hope.
All right. Well, Mr. Martin, you have the floor.
All right. So we have a major subdivision application that's been submitted, and it's really just a pre-application at this point. And this is regulated by chapter 235, which is the town code for subdivision of land. Also, chapter 290, which is the zoning ordinance, comes into play here because any subdivision in the coastal residential zone, which this is, has to comply with the open space requirements of chapter 290. So there's going to be the subdivision ordinance set year review along with the chapter 290 open space section. But Nordhaven Camden LLC is the applicant. Their agent is Gartley Andorsky, and we have Andrew Hedrick here today. The property address is 440 Belfast Road. It's map 134 lot 1. It's in the coastal residential zone. And there's a, again, it's a major subdivision because of the number of units. But they are proposing it's a, not going to be a public road. It is a private, open space subdivision, condo subdivision is what's proposed. I guess I'll leave it at that right now and let the applicant describe the project and move forward.
Okay. Go ahead then, Andrew.
Absolutely. Again, my name is Andrew Hedrick. I'm a senior civil engineer at Gartley Andorsky, right down the road here. This is Ed Hanson, one of the project owners, and Bob Brown. And there's also the local architect, Joe Rosillo, behind us, who's the Maple Street studio. He's also working with us on this project. As Jeremy said, it is a coastal residential zone, and we're proposing to put a major subdivision on this lot. The existing lots, 43 acres, it's a pretty heavily wooded site that has a big field area along the front. Loud enough so the mic can hear, but. Just to kind of show you.
Oh, there we go. Look at that.
How about that? Just to kind of show you, so, so here's the site in general. It's, it's a heavily wooded site. Here's the existing field area. There's an existing building in and about this location, and it has a driveway up to that current single-family unit right now. And to flip it over, just to give you a bigger picture of the location, so we all understand where it is. So the property does above the state park over there. The land's directly above the state park. So this is where the state park main entrance is, which is about 4,600 feet from our proposed project. And here's the main drive up to Mount, the top of Mount Batty there, and then our project is all the way off to the side here. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up. I know when, if you hear something adjacent to the state park, we want to make sure that we protect that efficiently, but I'm just trying to give you the big picture. There's a bald rock gravel road that comes in the back and kind of accesses bald rock, and then it kind of continues along through this, this park property. And it runs along the property here and then kind of terminates or ties back into the state park on that end of things. I've kind of dashed it in green there. But we're about, we're about 2,500 feet from that point. So this is as far as our development's going to go. And then we're about 2,500 feet to the nearest gravel road or trail up in the state park, just to kind of give you a general picture.
And maybe just to comment the general location, Spring Brook Hill, I think everyone's familiar with Spring Brook Hill. Come up the other side of the hill, heading north to Belfast. The site's on the left.
Right there on the left. Yep. Yep, exactly. Yeah, yep, yeah, it's, yeah, exactly. So there's a, there's actually, the Spring Brook runs right through this property. It kind of bisects the property. We're proposing to develop on one side and then preserve the other side of the Spring Brook to kind of consolidate our development and utilize that open space approach to the, the field out there. So as noted, this is, let me get it right side up. We're proposing to construct nine new single-family residential units with a new access road. So here's the existing access drive that comes in there with the existing house, and we're proposing to construct a new access road that kind of winds through the site, kind of fits in. So the, the whole goal of this development is to kind of blend it with nature. They're not going to go in there, tear everything down and put large houses in there. Their goal is to create small little cabins that are architecturally appealing, that fit into the nature, that are dark in color. They're, they're basically a smaller footprint, you know, that are, that are simplified to kind of tuck in and around the existing trees. It's, it's a, it's a challenging site. It's very steep, but we're going to put the roads and drives and accesses in there so that we can preserve as much as the, of the forest that we can, stay out of the critical habitat areas and kind of place these in and around where we want. So we are going to flag the big trees that we want to save and all that. So there's a lot. There's, there's a landscape designer involved, there's a landscape architect, and we're all working as a team to kind of identify and place all these houses in through there. I just wanted to give you a general picture. There's another one of the, the potential cabins that.
The general square footage range?
They're somewhere in the 1,000 to 1,600 square feet, somewhere in that range. So as you can see, we provided on this schematic plan, again, we're still working on the overall final designs of this. But in the schematic plan we presented, we're offering to put like a carport so that it would house one of the vehicles per the units and then have an open air space adjacent that would, you know, satisfy the need to have two spaces at each one of the units. We've kind of tucked those in there, and again, we're going to try to minimize the impact. We've tried to prevent from just putting a large parking lot area up there so that this will give us these little pocket areas that we can leave landscaped and vegetated around that, so we can kind of tuck these units in there. We have already reached out to DOT for an entrance permit, so they are kind of typically agreed to approve the entrance that we have requested. They're still working through the things, but I've been told that the entrance permit is on its way. They plan to issue that in the near future. Again, that doesn't mean we're locked in, but we just reached out to them to try to get a feel for what they would approve. And if the board would like us to move it or relocate it, we can go back to DOT to make those modifications.
And, and you'd completely eliminate the existing.
Exactly. This would be, this would go away. Right now, it's like, it's a Steve, you kind of, it's like a 10% climb directly adjacent. So the proposed entrance will be a 3% transition into the grade change to go up the hill.
At, at the other end as well?
At this, for.
Over by the, the existing house?
Yeah, so all, this entire road, so that's the plan, is to remove this entire area all the way through this. So all that would go away. So there's an extensive woods road system out there that there, it's about 10 feet wide, in some locations it may be even a little wider than that. But it, where the trees are removed and you could drive your pickup truck down through these roads, that network extends all the way up through here, wraps around. There's one that wraps up around the corner here. This one's a little narrower, but this is a major road too that kind of drives through there. So the goal is to utilize those existing trail systems to kind of minimize the tree removal that's going to be required. And again, to, to make everything kind of tuck in together. There is, um, there are going to be some permits required from, from DEP. One will be, there's a stormwater permit by rule that's required for 40,000 square feet of disturbed area. It's essentially a erosion control plan that dictates that you're going to make sure all the soils are stabilized and everything's taken care of. This will not trigger the stormwater management plan at this point in time, so you, you need a stormwater, a full stormwater management permit after one acre of impervious air. That will not be triggered. There's very minimal wetlands on the site. We've located all the wetlands that we have found. The only other potential permit that we anticipate that we're going to require is a permit by rule, and that's for the activity adjacent to the stream that I'm sure we are going to discuss here in a little bit as we get in close there. So just to kind of, while we're talking about it, the 75-foot setback from Spring Brook crosses that existing woods road. We're requesting a waiver to allow us to utilize that existing woods road as our road for the development down below. We're not going to encroach any closer to the stream. It's already wide enough to drive a vehicle through there. We simply would like to go in, widen out a little bit away from the, the, the stream setback and rebuild it and make it a suitable road base for those sections through there. But again, we can get into that. The other waiver requests that we kind of brought up that I wanted to bring to your attention is reducing the road width for this section specifically. So the ordinance requires us to have 18-foot wide roads with two-foot wide shoulders, but we requested to reduce that to about 16 total feet, which is sufficient to allow two vehicles to pass, and it would serve up to probably five units at the most in this small residential thing. So that's, that's one of the things we can get into as well. The, the other design waiver that we're, we did not request in this, but I'd like to discuss is, in the ordinance, there's a standard that allows you to increase the road grade beyond 10% for 100 feet. That's in the road standards. This site right now is at probably about 11% straight up. So we're fighting to get the road up above grade because we don't want to cut the road in because then we have a really wide swath through there. So ideally, we found a way to basically increase the road grade to about 12% for about 75 feet, which is within the ordinance with permission, just to get us up out of the ground so that we can kind of then just taper our road down and do our stormwater more or less at surface rather than having to cut and do subsurface drainage through there. There will be septic systems. Right now, we're proposing to put a septic field over here that will serve every one of these units. There is an existing septic field in this location right here that's serving this existing building that will remain as is. For this time, they plan on occupying, actually Ed's occupying it right now, and he plans to stay there. So we're going to leave that in place as we go through this project and kind of develop the other nine units and give them an entire new septic field. I think the only other thing on my list that I didn't really discuss is there's a deer wintering yard, a very large deer wintering yard on this property. There's, on our plan, you can kind of see it, we have a big magental, actually that's blue now. It used to be magenta. There's a cyan line that kind of comes through here, and this whole area has been determined to be a deer wintering yard based on their maps. So we have reached out to IF&amp;W, Keel Kemper over there. We've been working with him. He has provided us with some recommendations for that, that include making sure we do the development within the hardwood area because the deer don't like the hardwood areas as much as the softwoods, preserving a large chunk of the land in the back to make sure we keep a big contiguous area, and then kind of working through other requirements that he may have. But he reviewed this and he sent an email. I forwarded it to Jeremy. I have copies here that I'd like to submit to you for your records. But it basically says that he doesn't believe a full biological study would be required for this to be able to come up with a suitable solution to satisfy IF&amp;W for impacts to these, the proposed impacts to the deer wintering yard area. So I know there's a lot to unpack there, but generally speaking, I think we can come to terms with them. Because if you look at your ordinance, it does call for identifying the deer wintering areas as a special or, but I think his letter that he wrote to us or his email is pretty self-explanatory, and it would be good to read through as we go forward with the permitting here. In general, I think, I think that's pretty much it. I think we're going to comply with the ordinance, proceed with everything that we need to. I'm going to, and again, we have a large team that's going to handle each and every piece of this to make sure that we can, we can comply with the ordinance and still make aesthetically appealing and minimalistic development out there.
Andrew, this might be a pain for you, but do you mind turning the easel around that way and share it with the folks that are here? Just so they can see a little bit. The plan. It is available. It's been on the town's website as well, and we can, it's available for anyone to see. You can download the app, the packet and all that.
To the point as, as Mary, you were located in the septic field.
Generally in this area, right here, actually. Our latest, our latest version, this plan is consolidating. Does that work? Want me to hold that right up? There we go. I don't mind. I don't mind. So generally speaking, we're, we're looking to put the septic field that'll serve these nine units in this location here. We've done some general soil test pitting to confirm there is suitable soils in those locations. And we're just going to put one large system that'll be about 1,800 gallons to serve all of those units. So each of the units will have a tank, a septic tank, and they'll all pump up to the septic field. We may take a few of the units and share in one tank, but it'll all be appropriately sized if we need to oversize it so we can fit two or three units into one of the septic tank areas. And then there'll be wells to serve the rest of it. The septic area? No, it is not. It's not. It's, it's basically, there's two test pits over here, and that's where we're targeting. And honestly, my, our most recent plan, we've, we've kind of pulled this road away even further. We show that road coming up here, and we have a big field area. And so the next plan you see will definitely have that box identified. It's a pretty large box. I think we're looking at about 110 feet by 70 feet to kind of establish that septic field that's going to be required for that. And that's a conservative area, but we have that on our most recent plans and can stay away from it. So it's right here, this backyard, you can't tell in here, but it's already a fielded area. It's been kind of cleared out. There's a wooded perimeter, and we're going to basically tuck that right along the side there. We'll get to that. Yeah, I'm sure.
Sure.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty informal. It's pretty informal right now. It's.
Make sure your mic is on when you ask your questions.
Okay. Oh, what exactly are the boundaries of that deer wintering area? Because I see the arrows there.
That big blue dotted, goes all the way around.
This?
Yep.
Yes, yep.
This blue line right here that goes along the brook?
Yeah, it's, it's this one right here. So if it, it extends from here all the way up and across the site.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, so it's this one.
Basically cuts the left half. It almost cuts in half.
So that's all in the deer wintering area. Okay, so there's, all right. And.
Say, just so you know, like from the state's perspective, they don't come out and identify every single, the meets and bounds of a deer wintering yard in the state of Maine. They just don't do that. They look primarily looking at forest cover type, and they say, okay, this is where we're going to call a deer wintering yard. And that, that's how they do it. And then so for me, and it's a case-by-case basis as they move forward with projects that are near them or in them.
Okay. And when they were talking about if the IF&amp;W consider it a high or moderate, in fact, I think, what exactly does that mean?
Well, essentially, that's associated with different types of wetlands and other critical habitat areas. Deer wintering areas in yards are not determined to be high or moderate value. They do not rate them, unlike the other ones. Because there's really, to, to properly, what IF&amp;W, I'm learning a lot, we're going through IF&amp;W too. What Keel has informed me is to properly rate a deer wintering yard, you have to spend a substantial amount of time out there on-site in the winter to actually identify where they might go and what they want to kind of direct how that yard should be before they decide to classify it. Do deer counts kind of see what's being used there? So the state doesn't ever classify these deer wintering areas. They just kind of put them as indeterminate. They flag out where the deer wintering yard may be, and then they leave it in that kind of general area. And that's why we reached out to him, and that's where he's basically said that, let's work together, let's find an area that's suitable for us. We'll preserve it, protect it, make sure we're not, you know, reducing their habitat to a, to a, a problem level, if you will, and kind of work with them going through that. So that's, that's the direction we.
And I would add, I think, I think it was the prior owner of the property reached out to me when this deer wintering yard, or area came up. Even the property owner had no idea that his property was a deer wintering area. I mean, they just, you don't know.
Right. If he's not out there observing it, sure.
Well, I'm sure there's deer out there, but from a state perspective, he had no idea it was classified as a deer wintering area.
Right. That's how they're done.
That's how the state does it. They don't notify property owners. They just, you know, they look at aerial photos, they look at forest cover types and say, look, there's a bunch of hemlock, there's a lot of cover for the winter for deer, so we're going to call that a deer wintering area. And that's how the state handles it.
So then, when they talk about high or moderate, considered high or moderate, that you're saying that's somewhat irrelevant to this conversation?
Yeah. Deer yards, unless they do, unless they do a full-on assessment.
Right. They, he, what Keel told me is you can hire somebody to go out there, investigate the situation, and give you their interpretation on whether they believe it's a, a higher value. But they don't, they don't kind of label them as high or moderate value. There's no criteria out there to determine that. So they would basically go and have to observe it during the winter, during these conditions, check out what the, the data says, and then make a determination based on their experience if it's high value or not.
So it sounds like it's kind of an unknown at this point.
It certainly is. It certainly is. And, and in that email, I, I know you haven't seen it, but in that email, he directly addresses that. And he, he specifically makes the statement that, that he's willing, he says, actually, I can read it right to you. I think.
Welcome to share copies if you have them with the board.
Nope, I have some right here.
You may approach.
So this was, honestly, Keel was working prior to the holidays, trying to get something to us. He was going on vacation. And he determined that before he, he issues an official letter, he would go through and kind of issue this so that we could review it at this pre-app meeting. He knew that was coming up and make any determinations or make sure that that was how the planning board wanted to proceed. But in summary, to kind of go through, I won't read the whole thing. I think that's in front of you. But he, he basically laid out a number of steps that include, you know, preservation, sheltering, making sure that we put the development in the hardwood areas, try to focus on those areas. And he says, basically, if these steps are taken, we will not need to consider formal deer wintering yard area surveys. Basically, then he goes on to say, which could delay the project, and our agency will not oppose this development as presented. So he kind of made a general statement at the end of the recommendations. And, and again, the recommendations are something that is very amenable to what we're proposing to do. You know, they have a strong desire to preserve as much of this land as possible anyways and consolidate. That's why we're doing the open space development, so we can kind of pull the units together, cluster them up, not worry about lot sizes and spreading them out, and then be able to take a large chunk of land that's, you know, like I said, to the west of Spring Brook and in the back portion of the site up against the state park land, and just preserve that and leave that in its natural condition.
I have a question about the hot tub and sauna.
Yes.
The location you have for them appears to be right up against some wetlands. And can you just walk us through the thought process and what the, what the options were when you were citing that?
Yeah, so, so we, we cited it in a location that was just outside the 75. If you, I think, I don't know if we'll be able to make it down in there when we do a site walk, but if we can go down in there, you'll, once you see the spot, you'll be like, aha, this is why. Honestly, there's, there's a waterfall along Spring Brook. There's a couple of different waterfalls. It's absolutely beautiful to look through. So that location is high. There's the existing trail that goes right by there, so we kind of just went off the edge of the trail, kind of picked that location so you could see the natural features while minimally impacting things. So we'll be able to stay outside the wetlands. That, that wetland impacts a big drainage draw that kind of pulls down through there. It's not a stream, but it looks like it's just a drainage draw that comes down through there. It was historically culverted underneath that section. So it, it is wet, but we're going to be able to stay outside of the wetlands there.
Yeah, and, and going to that, that existing road, it's not. Yeah. And going to that, that existing road, it's not set back 75 feet.
Correct.
Yeah. And I'm not sure that we can waive that.
Okay.
Jeremy, do you have any?
No, I think it's a good point. And that section is in the open space provision. I think what, I think when we're out there, and I, I mean, I tend to agree with you. That said, there is a, a pretty significant road out there.
Right. I understand. I'm not, you know, I do understand the benefit of the existing road and not doing all the extra.
And so I think, I think that question would probably be best answered when we get out there and take a look at what the makeup of that, that road is. I mean, when I, when I think about woods roads, I think about old woods roads. This one, to me, doesn't sound like it's an old woods road. This sounds like more, it's a more.
Established.
Established road. So it's possible that we, they may be able to keep it. I mean, they're talking about a 65-foot piece of that existing road to, to be used. But I think that's something we should make a call when we're out on the site.
Yeah. I mean, obviously in favor of less excavation.
Absolutely. Me too. But I'm also in favor, I mean, we've got to protect our resources and, and stream water quality. And like you're saying, if you're going to disturb a bunch more soil and create new impervious and, and all that goes into that, you know, you got to, I think you weigh the pros and cons of that. And from a shoreline zoning perspective, because it is a shoreline zone stream, they have the right to maintain existing grandfathered structures. But the board, you know, can, can weigh in on it. And, and I think certainly Shenley and I will talk about it with you guys and the applicant probably when we're out on site and see really what. So I think in terms of the site visit, I think really flagging off that area, that 65-foot wide piece is important to do so we can see it.
Yep.
But I think also, I mean, I, I know you're trying to blend into the environment as best you can, and I very much appreciate it. And I think that's your goal here. But the disturbance that is created when people make roads, right, that happens. I mean, you know, the road is going to be maybe 12 feet wide, but while they're doing the work, it ends up being a work zone of like 20 feet, right? We want to make sure that doesn't happen. If we do allow them to maintain that existing little piece of road within that 75 and we're barely within, I mean, we're just at that 75, right? It's not like we're down at 25 feet. We're, we're pretty much hugging that 75-foot line with this piece. But if we can make sure, this is just thought, that there is no, you know, that we limit that impact, possibility of negative impact on the resource there and allow them to keep it. It may be something that we could, we could work through.
Right. And is the purpose of that road expressly to serve the sauna and hot tub?
No, it's to serve these, these are two, there's actually, it's this, there's residential units down below. So those three residential units would be accessed for that.
Do you want to turn, turn the map around and show the folks that are in public? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's still outside 75?
This is still inside 75.
Okay.
This is the area we're talking about right here. So here's the Spring Brook.
So it's just that last little portion. It's not this other trail that's going on to the hot tub?
No, it's about a 60-foot section of trail through that.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about the whole thing to the hot tub.
No, it's just a little, no, 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 no.
Just this little corner.
That's, we'll leave that to naturalize and, yeah.
And you won't have vehicles traveling on that?
No, 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 no. There'll, there'll be barricades in there to prevent that from occurring. Yeah, yeah.
As soon as we can, all the rest of the road is, is maintained as natural woodland.
Yep.
And that is the existing. You know, the road continues all the way through the property. It'll be left as is.
Sorry. Yep. Got it. That's very helpful. Thank you.
I have a quick question. You're not doing anything ever.
Yeah, you need to state your name for the record, please, and your address, and then you may ask your question.
Okay, I'm Carter Mann. I'm on the butter on the west side of all of this. Yes, right there. Right there. And may I get up and this, I didn't know there was a deer. I've been up, I've lived here all my life. I've been up through here hundreds of times. And were you doing this 20 years ago, I'd be just heartbroken. But now I'm 75 and we have ticks and we have blowdowns and we have water damage down through the brook and it's not the same place it was that I remember. But I didn't know anything about a deer area. I certainly know this area. I just didn't know that it was deer. But you're not doing anything on the west side of the brook ever, right?
Nothing.
Yeah. So in a, and there's that very steep hill going, where's, okay, right here. Right, right here, there's a steep hill, very steep. And you can't do anything between the top of that hill and the brook anyway, because it's, so where was I going with this? Oh, I, I don't see that the deer wintering area has much to do with you and whether it's a major area or a minor area or in the middle area. Doesn't matter, does it?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's a different type of resource, you know, that they flag and it's the language that is in the resource protection. Essentially, the ordinance has adapted that high or moderate value from other resources, you know, wetlands and those components that are regulated and determined to be higher moderate value. They've adopted it. So there generally isn't a thing. Honestly, when I reached out to IFNW, some of the earlier things that they said was that, you know, we have a lot of deer wintering yards in Maine and a lot of deer and too much deer, quite honestly, in a lot of areas. So they're going to look at what is really needed in this area, look at the big picture and see if we can't modify the area to, to make it work for the site here.
Okay. You're not showing it on this map, but there's a monstrous hill in here somewhere.
Yeah, right here, actually. The high point of the site is right in the middle of that area. There's a little, a trail that kind of comes down. There's an old foundation. It's just way up in the air there. Yeah.
All right. I think it's okay. We're talking about different places, but it's, it's okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to use up on everybody's time with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Crystal, go ahead.
I just a couple of questions. On the, the project as a whole, with these cab, you're calling them cabins. I heard them described as condos. What is the ownership structure proposed? What's the, what's the, are they year-round? Are they seasonal?
Yeah, they're, they're intended to be year-round. We call them a condo for the sense that they're going to all share the open land, the open space. So that's when you get the condo delineation. But they will be sold outright to potential buyers that want to use these year-round. And we're still working on the cabin style and the type, but it's very similar to, to what we're looking at now. You know, decks are changing a little bit and windows and whatnot. But generally speaking, those cabins with full foundations, proper insulation, energy code requirements will be constructed out here for.
And they will own, so they will, it will be a condo membership, ownership rather than you're not subdividing into lots?
No, no.
Like that?
So they'll own the condo and usually, depending on how the, the covenants are written, if they own the outside or the inside wall, that'll be described. And then they're going to all share an ownership of the open space land for that lot.
Okay. And then sort of along with that, you have, and that was, this is my question about the existing road. And you have parking spaces. So they'll theoretically be parking in parking spaces, not in front of their house or.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And will that be in the covenants part of it or?
Definitely. They'll, they'll have all that very clear. The, yeah, the, the goal is to, their, their goal has always been to pull the vehicles away from the houses. Quite honestly, that we've talked about doing some grassed areas just up so you could pull up, you know, unload your groceries or whatever you need to be at the building and then pull out and park remotely. So we're trying to keep them within reason so somebody's not walking half a mile to their car. But for the most part, we're trying to tuck them away.
We, we know that human nature, when it comes to parking, is to put your car as close to the door that you want to go into as possible.
To be, to be honest, that went into some of our, our thought process when we requested the waiver to narrow that road. If we put in the 22-foot wide road down there that's required by the ordinance, you know, you're going to see people, I think, try to tuck off to the side because they're going to believe, oh, there's plenty of room here. So kind of consolidating that up, tucking that up will make it clear that if you park in the road, you're going to block the, the person trying to get in or out here. So.
Yeah, our, our whole idea is that this is really cabins in situ in the forest. We didn't want this to look like a mini suburbia with housecar, housecar. And so pulling the, pulling the traffic and the cars and the parking away from those lets us have a better setting for these cabins.
To the parking point, how many total spaces do you have here? And how, how do you plan for people that have, want to have a large group, family gathering?
Yeah. So, so right now, what we've shown on the plan is we've shown two spaces per unit, you know, to, to meet the ordinance requirements. What, there'll be a portco, undercover, a covered parking and an uncovered parking. I'm sure by the time we get to the end of the final designs, we will definitely have like a little visitors area tucked in here or there so that you can accommodate, you know, four or five cars or two or three in each location, just as overflow parking for that very reason.
There was in the write-up, a talk about buildings on posts. And I think, Ed, you had mentioned it just a little bit before. But you just a minute ago said, everything's going to have a foundation.
Well.
Is there?
Yeah, we're, honestly, that's, that's, that's beyond my level. So that gets into our structural engineer. So we're trying to minimize the footprint and the impacts to these as much as we can, you know, which includes basically potentially, you know, having buildings overhang and put them on posts so we can minimize the excavation around that. So it's going to be a combination of all those things, full basement, frost walls, you know, posts may come into play. It depends on what the architect and the structural engineer basically determine they need. But again, the goal is to keep that footprint in so we don't have to dig out for a large footing and around the whole perimeter. It'd be, it'd be great if we could kind of can lever out or put some posts in there to hang the building off some of these cliffs. Because it is, the topography out there is pretty challenging. There's a lot of steep grades. We're going to be kind of situating the buildings in there pretty tightly. So the less impact to the ground and utilizing posts will allow us to do that, I think, to the, the best of what they're looking for. But again, that's going to come up to be determined by the structural engineer. If she, if she can look at it and say, hey, this will work, let's do the posts, then we're going to try to implement them wherever we can.
They're all building code compliant, those, those posts.
Right, right. Is there going to be any blasting on the site?
There's, there is rock on the site. There may be blasting on the site. We are, it's undetermined at this point in time. Quite honestly, this entire hillside right here, the road where it is, is where it is because that's a ledge and rock face there. So again, that's why we're trying to narrow that up. We're trying to avoid disturbance to allow us to get into this lower section. If we don't utilize the 75, I think we would need to do some extensive blasting along that edge to kick that road over into that rock face there. But we can look at that on site. The goal is, we never want to do blasting, but the whole site is rock. So we, we may get into doing some blasting for some of the foundations if we need to do those and, and some of these. But, but with the blasters nowadays, they can do a lot of small treatment blasts and they, they don't, they don't just go in there and, you know, blow an acre site up. They can do pretty, pretty small areas.
Where, where's the utilities coming? Like electric line? Is that underground?
Yes, that's the goal is to run it underground. The telecom and electrical will all come in underground. So in, in fact.
The road corridor probably or?
Yeah, well, well, you know, when you get into underground utilities, they may, they may start to kind of twist and we may find a, you know, quite honestly, I was, I was thinking about this earlier. We may utilize that existing corridor with the road to kind of shoot them up to the back. That might be the quickest path up through there rather than follow that road that we snaked in there. And, and then kind of incorporate that. And then the wells will be a spot placed and we'll determine how many people are going to share the wells. And ideally, we'd have multiple wells.
Each house has its own heat.
Oh, yes.
All that. So you're not connecting any of those.
No, everything will be independent. It'll be a standalone unit. You'll share some of the, the land and some of the resources like the septic field and whatnot.
And as far as the, the, what we're going to call preserved open space, that will be included in the HOA? Is that, and I saw a mention in here from the letter from the state, whether there was some sort of deed restriction considered or, or in the HOA document. I'll give you some, some, just general feedback right now from me and we haven't discussed it as the board. But given the proximity to the park and the, the unknowns around the habitat, I'm inclined to request a biological study. Because I think the, the one thing that we have to remember is that these ecosystems are interconnected. And so when you've got, I'm sure we have plenty of deer using the park. And so I, I'm inclined to, to want to determine how much is going on on this property before we go in and do all of this. I don't know if it's going to delay the project. I don't know how much you were planning to do this winter.
It, it would, it would. So for one, there's, there's really nobody that specializes these, in these, in the deer counting. So it's kind of a unique situation because they don't do it, quite honestly. Usually IFNW comes to the site if there's questions, review it, make the recommendations. And generally speaking, the town and the impacted agencies will agree and approve what they're doing. I have not had to go through a biological study for a deer wintering yard that we've encountered because that would kind of deviate from what IFNW is recommending, who generally control those areas, quite honestly. But what Keel was telling me, the ones he has seen, experienced, they take several months. They're like three, four, five month long process over the entire winter. And somebody's there onsite pretty heavily to kind of document whether deer are and where they're not.
And it would have to be during winter.
Yes, yes. Yep. So even in winters like we're having right now, it's, it may be an inaccurate, inaccurate assessment, quite honestly. So it's, it's a challenging study.
And this seems like a winter.
That can go on for years, right?
And this seems like a winter like we have regularly now.
This is.
This may be the norm.
Right.
You know, and I mean, again, this is something the board will discuss. But again, I, you know, hearing words like indeterminate.
Right.
Aren't real encouraging.
Well, it's, it's the way he's classified, that's the way the state classifies it.
I understand that. Right. But, but, but this is, this is, you know, again, it's, it's the proximity to the, to the park for me and, and the, the idea that you have all that open space. And if it, if it were to be determined critical and we didn't consider it critical, I would think we would have made a mistake.
There would be no determination like that. They would not be saying, they would not make those official determinations like you would with a wetland where that law is coming from and that language is coming from.
It may not be named as such, but it would be indicated as such.
It would be the biologist's opinion that they believe there's a high-value habitat there.
Right.
Correct.
Right. And then there may come recommendations from that beyond what this, the IFW is represent, is, is suggesting, right?
I, I would, I would recommend we continue to work with Keel, Kemper, the IFNW representative. Him hearing this, he may be able to kind of review that and provide some additional insight on that. He was treating them as a high value. He wasn't just discarding them and saying, yeah, go ahead, do what you want out there.
No, I get that.
He was treating them as that higher value with preserving, you know, 20, 30 acres out there, keeping your development within the, the hardwood areas, which is what we've done. So right, this is all hardwood area down here. And then there's a hardwood area down through this section that we're trying to keep the development primarily within. We are impacting some softwood through that area, but it's, it's very, very minor. It's, it's this area right here, essentially. You can't see it on this plan here, but this is all, this is all hardwood area. So this lower section is entirely within the hardwood. So we're essentially talking about this little circle here that we're impacting.
Mm-hmm.
In that deer wintering area. So, yeah.
And I would also say, you know, you, you need to consider that the major tract of the property is being preserved.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. And I totally appreciate that, that you're making every effort. But I also want to make sure that we're making every effort to, to preserve what is necessary. So just something to think about, you know, the board will discuss. But I was just giving a little heads up from my perspective.
Charlie, thank you.
Carter Mann, again. Do you have, I know you, you don't know exactly, but just an idea of a completion date for this, the whole project?
For the whole project? I believe they're hoping to go through permitting this winter through that and then start construction in the, the spring to summer of, of this coming year.
Right. But how long would the construction last before you're gone? You know, before it's all done?
It should be pretty quickly for the road and infrastructure. And then the units, depending on how quickly they're sold, you know. So they, they're going to kind of spot build a few and if they're selling quickly, I'm sure they'll go in and put them. And I would hate to estimate even.
Of course.
Quickly, smooth.
Of course.
But, but the infrastructure is not a major project. We're talking like a, a month-long, six-week-long construction in there to get the road in, get it all situated, and then they're out. It's not, there's only about 800 feet of road here. So it's not a significant, significant construction project. The time's going to come with the unit placement and the foundations and, and actually building those units. There's going to be the time.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Allison McKeller.
Did, I was just going to, we have a public information meeting too?
I know, kind of blended.
All right.
Kind of blended. I think that's.
And that's fine. I would just.
Are we okay with a more informal?
Absolutely.
Blend?
Is, so do you want to just?
That's what I've been, yeah, Crystal mentioned it. And that's what I've kind of been operating under because we had people mentioning it from the, so I'm okay with that if everybody else is.
I figured I'd just come up here so everybody doesn't have to turn around. Allison McKeller, 79 Mechanic Street. Overall, I, you know, I expected, when I first saw this pop up, I expected to be 100% opposed, devastated, heartbroken. And, you know, there's definitely a, a part of me that feels that way because it seems like it's a result of the zoning changes that we. changes that we just approved. Would this have been allowed before? It would have, okay. So, learning a little bit more about it, um, and the fact especially that it's not going to be divided up into individual parcels that are sold separately that then give each individual landowner the opportunity to decide whatever trees they want to cut down. Um, that i- is something that I like a lot. Um, and it seems like there's a lot of opportunity here to be able to make sure that it's something that preserves the habitat into the future. My biggest um concern about the project or about um, just how we would go about it would be um, brook trout. I think that um, if you look at um, you know, Spring Brook, Spring Brook is no ordinary stream. Um, it's a place that I wasn't fully, I've lived here my whole life, but I wasn't fully aware of it until recently. It came up on my radar when um, the DOT, MDOT widening project. Um, and one of the things that it triggered for them is that there's right now a culvert that goes under Route One that is a fish passage blocker. You know, they put that in there before they really understood that fish need to go up and down and move to different parts of the stream to, um, and also different, they come from the ocean too. So there have been documented sea run brook trout in that stream. Um, one, you'll have an opportunity, I guess, to s- to see the stretch of the stream on the property. But also if you think about um, the downstream impacts here, I appreciate the um, recognition of sort of the interconnectedness of this whole area. Um, and looking, if you go just underneath that Route One culvert, there's this just truly magical place. It's a, it's a real shame that there's a fish passage blocking culvert there. But it, the water is of a clarity like you see in these places. Like it doesn't feel like you're in Camden. The water is just so clear that it has this kind of green feeling and there are vines and it's, it's just kind of amazing. And so one of the big concerns that I have is um, like the actual construction process. I think that your um, instinct is right here to try to maintain those existing roads, you know, that have already been graded properly. And as much as you can stay to that, um, as you can, I think is really good. Um, but you know, the actual erosion control that happens during um, the process, historically, that's what I've seen in Camden, just hasn't been done well. Um, because you know, you go with the lower, the, the contractors really have to be told ahead of time um, to, to, to put all the erosion control in place. And we're getting these walkers of storms that are, you know, what would have worked before um, just isn't working now. And people are getting really caught off guard. It just happened to MDOT when they were doing the daily brook project over Route One. Um, all of their erosion control got completely swept away. So um, I think the, I, I appreciate that the s- the state, what they kind of, what comes up in your searches is this deer wintering habitat. Um, and, and sure, you know, there's some deer wintering habitat. It's, it, I agree with the analysis that, yeah, they fly over and they're like, oh, there's some deer wintering habitat. Um, that probably, in my opinion, isn't the thing that is of greatest concern for this property. I can tell you there are a lot of deer that winter behind my dad's house on McGonagall Creek River on Herrick Road. There's, there's a lot of that in Camden. What we don't have a lot of are streams that support native brook trout populations. That's what is going away. This is a stream that's never been stocked. It sustains brook trout that somehow managed to like get over these waterfalls and not all the waterfalls, but they, it's, we don't, we haven't even fully um, studied the diversity of that stream. Um, and we've done damage to it in the past without knowing. And it's, um, are these, are these probably going to be places where people might, it might be like vacation rental some or?
That, that's the goal is to sell them as a residential home. I mean, the nature of, I mean, we see them on the picture. We know where they are. They're going to have, some of them will have ocean views, so they may be seasonal for those individuals. But it depends on what they wear. They're going to be full-time, year-round homes that are sold out.
Require that. Or anyway, there is no way to require that. I bet. In, in some way, I know we're not supposed to be um, in favor of vacation rentals, but sometimes it's not the worst thing either because people do appreciate the, the wildlife and um, you know, I'm sure nobody wants to do anything that would take away the ability to go down and see like a wild native brook trout in a stream. It's a really amazing thing for, for anybody. So I guess that would be my main point here is like to, if you were going to request a study, which um, I think is wise, I don't know, you know, each individual type of study, but it, it might just be as simple as having somebody from um, the uh, Trout Unlimited, like the local chapter of Trout Unlimited, somebody like Dan Daly or Roy Hitchens or Jeff Riordan, um, go on a site walk and say, you know, this is what you'd want to be aware of. Um, it's, that, that might help to bring some things onto your radar because I think that's the really special thing. The only other thing that um, I was remembering from the ordinance is that isn't there something prohibiting development or driveways on slopes greater than 25%?
There's a provision. Um, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but you're asking for a waiver of one of the?
Yeah, no, so we're going to be able to comply with the 25%. So we're, we're looking for a waiver.
The width.
For the width. And there's a slope that we're looking for. So the existing grade is about 11%. Most of the sites are about 11% slope. Um, so we're, we'd like to, the current ordinance calls for 10%. Um, so if you have 11% slope and a 10%, you start cutting into the land after you go through these. So we're looking for a waiver to allow us to increase that slope to about 12% for about a 75 foot, 100 foot section. That would get us up on top of that, you know, continuous 11% slope, just enough the roads up above it so we can minimize the, the ditching and the width and the cut and removal of slope.
And is there a calculation already for the amount of impervious surface?
Yes.
Added?
Yes. So we're, we're staying underneath an acre of impervious area. Um, but we are going to design the stormwater management system in compliance with DEP.
So, because you know, the biggest thing for that stream is the temperature. Um, the, the biggest thing for the, for brook trout is keeping it as cold as possible. That's the most important factor. And so um, sometimes they'll talk about um, temperature pollution and looking at the temperature of the water that's coming off as, you know, it sounds like you guys are really doing a lot of the things um, that are important already. I, the minimizing of trees um, being taken down, that sounds good. I'm just wondering if, are you going to identify, you know, exactly how many trees or the amount of canopy that's lost?
I can address some of this. Uh, yeah, so um, uh, you know, the, I think the falls are quite a challenge for the brook trout. There's a series of like seven waterfalls that are getting up there. But um, but definitely the water quality we're concerned about. One of our biggest criteria in selecting subcontractors is, is making sure that they share our vision for the property. And um, we'll be requiring that they use the smallest practical equipment when they go in there. So we're, we're very conscious of that and, and it's a, it's a major factor in how we, we approach the property. Um, um, so I would say that, you know, that, that's a concern of ours. We have a, a woodland management plan that we've uh contracted with a forester for, for the property. Um, and so the trees that are taken will be done quite selectively.
And then the use of herbicides? Or is there any way you can put something in the deed or in the, or, do you plan to stay the owner or?
Well, the, the condominium association will own the property in the end. Yeah.
But there's a developer that's, but you, you put things in the agreement that?
We can. You can put things in the agreement. And we have the intention uh of not using, there won't be lawns planted. There won't be, we won't be kind of creating those things that would create non-point source pollution.
So with the falls and the brook trout, one thing that's interesting is you'll actually see, like certainly there are impassable falls. Um, but what you'll find is actually distinct populations um, above and below the falls. So um, the stream has been shut off to, because of the culvert there, it's been shut off to s- to sea run, you know, above that culvert, it's been shut off. But in the future, they hope to open that up. So it's actually, there's like mottled salmon rearing habitat there. Um, if you look at the um, the Nature Conservancy went and inventoried every stream and every um, it's the mainstream habitat viewer. You can go on there and they'll, you know, tell you what kind of potential habitat is there. So anyway, thanks for listening.
Thanks. For me to make a quick comment on what Allison just said?
Of course.
Thank you. I, please don't take this wrong and you're bound to, but there's a real working possibility. Oh, Carter, man, yet again, sorry. There's a real working possibility. And I don't know all of you. I know some of you. And I know more about Spring Brook than anybody in the room. And the reason is I've been, I'm 75. I've been a daughter for 75 years less, a few years in Canada. I've walked up Spring Brook and walked it, run down Spring Brook just on stone to stone to stone, risking my life. I've been everywhere up there, multiple, multiple times. I know the place like the back of my hand. Allison, no offense, I love just down from the culvert, the 12 foot by 12 foot cul, con, what is that? It's concrete.
Box culvert.
Box culvert. Thank you. You're absolutely right. That, that pond down below there is glorious. Above it, every summer I've seen Spring Brook bone dry. No trout, no way trout. You can do anything you want with the culvert under Route One. It's not going to put water and trout in Spring Brook for the whole year. Now, I don't know, I'm nobody's biologist and I don't know how long trout need water. Maybe, I don't know. But I will tell you, there is no water in Spring Brook multiple times. Okay? Allison, I live there. Spring Brook goes dry. I don't care whether it fits in with your trout. I love you. I love you and your trout. But, but. But unless you get some way of getting water in Spring Brook, you ain't going to get no trout. It can't happen.
They do, that's why it's important for them to be able to move to different parts of the stream at different times because of exactly what you're saying.
But, but, well, I, I don't want to beat it to death. This, they can't move to a different part of the stream. There's no water.
We should go with Will Hoffman. I'm sure we could talk about this for hours. We'll have to take it off.
Appreciate, I appreciate the input of both parties. So um, that's, that's great though. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I, sorry, I beat it to death.
Oh, no, that's fine. It's, it's, it's good information. You, you have, you live there and you've, you've got information. Um, Chris, do you have something?
I did have a quick question because you mentioned earlier, and you just mentioned it again, um, that you're working with landscape or design. And I was curious about what that, and you just mentioned there won't really be lawn.
Right.
So it is going to be mostly just a forested landscape environment, even right around the houses?
A hundred percent. Forested, wood chips, kind of that natural minimalistic approach to these. So that's, that's the goal. They're, you know, we're, we're looking to even incorporate stormwater management, like, you know, so they'll fall off the roof, we'll be collecting the roof and put it through filter treatments, rate localized at each one of those units so that we can keep everything in the small impact pretty, pretty minimal.
Yes, Rob Brown. Um, I would just add that the landscape objective is restoration as opposed to typical um, you know, new development landscape. So the, the landscape around the homes will focus on restoration of the forest floor with native species. Um, so think ferns and pine needles and maybe birch trees, uh, if we're going to do any kind of major, major planting. And we've hired a landscape architect out of Bar Harbor who specializes in naturalized landscapes. So it's all about using native species and, and restoration of the natural uh landscape that we disturbed in the process.
Yeah, we'll be uh, we'll be collecting pine duff. We'll be collecting uh moss as we go and, and trying to use that to reestablish. So a lot of the materials for landscape will come from the site itself.
Um, and a little quick question. Um, as we got into the Spring Brook, uh, I, I know it was pre-existing, but what is the spillway that's over by the sauna in that section? Is there any function of that or?
There's no current function. There are, there are legends about what it might have been used for. There's no.
It's just a structure that's there. Okay.
Yeah.
So just to kind of follow up with the erosion control, um, with the nature of that stream and its placement, anything in, in the fact we're going through DEP for permitting review, any of the erosion control measures will be doubled up. So there'll be like a double sediment barrier, a down gradient, especially adjacent to that entire streamline there. Just, just to make sure, in addition to all the soil treatments that'll happen. But all that will be on our next round of plans here as we uh get into design work.
Just add, um, I think um, you'll see, I don't know if you've seen, and Allison's right, storm events really can, like we've had recently, can really take out erosion control. But I, if you drive around, I mean, we did pass that erosion control, um, modified erosion control amendment last year. Um, and every site, um, if, if you see a site around town that doesn't have erosion control, let me know. But um, the co, the word is out, to be honest, in town, that erosion control is a significant issue for us and a concern for the town. Um, we get on sites all the time and are harping on the contractors about erosion control. This will not be any different. We'll be inspecting the erosion control before they actually do any disturbance. Um, they've got to in, in, you know, install the erosion control measures before and we'll be on it. Um, it's a, a big concern for water quality. Um, and I, you know, my point earlier about this, this little stretch of the road that they want to maybe keep, which I think Allison made a good point, and I think you folks did too, and they did, you know, you don't want to, new disturbance causes new problems. And you've got an existing situation that is not problematic there. But when we're there, I think, and their desire to preserve trees and place these, these homes in and amongst the trees themselves, um, you know, we can do certain things about making sure that, you know, no further trees are cut. You know, we can add some of this language to it um, as conditions, um, especially in those areas. And it's really that area, you know, along the brook. And I know we're staying 75, everything's 75 feet away. 75 feet's not a great distance. Um, but if we can um, preserve or enhance um, that, that buffer that's there and that canopy, I mean, they're talking about maintaining the tree canopy and getting these homes in, inside that tree canopy. And I, I think that's a significant um, and positive thing that they're um, doing and not, it's not a, you know, most subdivisions you see, they go in, they blow everything up and they put a road in and, and there they go. This is a very different scenario. I think we can all agree that this is a very thoughtfully done project and we do appreciate that. Um, so I think, you know, we may be, we may be cutting, splitting fine hairs here. But, but I think the, the input that we're receiving from both the public and from the board is important. And you guys have been great with the, with providing information. Alice, might I see your hand up?
Yeah, I can actually, really quickly. Um, with the monitoring of erosion control, one of the really big differences that I see here is that there's no public access. So the, most of the other problems that are caught in town um, come from somebody walking by. I mean, I get messages from people all the time that say, I don't think this, you know, this erosion control doesn't look like it's set up properly. And, you know, such, Jeremy drives by or somebody drives by, it's going to, this one isn't none of that, you're going to, the way you're going to know is because Spring Brook is going to turn brown. And somebody's going to say, oh, it looks like something might be going wrong up there. So um, one of the things that you might require would be like an, an inspector that is hired by the developers, somebody who's in charge of overseeing that. And a lot of the time, the plans call for the right thing. But getting the contractor to monitor that around the clock is another story because it's, I mean, it's really hard work. So finding a provision to make sure that somebody is responsible 100% of the time for, for that, um, because you're not going to be able to have somebody.
How about we just deputize Allison McKeller?
I would be happy to, you know, I, I was.
I figured you would. Um, no, we won't, we won't do that to you. But um, but, but, but also we do want to, thanks, Allison.
I'd love to do that. I've actually never walked that.
We do want to um, you know, also acknowledge the work that the town is doing and that Jeremy and his crew are doing and in, in enforcement. Um, and we can make, you know, even, we can even put requirements for, you know, weekly visits out there or something like that if we want to. So, you know, but, but um, I, you know, again, I, I do appreciate it, the, the, even, even in the selection of subcontractors that, that you say align with your thing and everything. Allison's absolutely right. At some point in time, it's a lot more convenient to just do something than it is to, to do the proper thing sometimes. And, and, and that does happen. So um, we are concerned about that. Definitely the quality of the water. Um, and I'm guessing that it's a fairly steep grade down to it, you know. And so that's, that's another high, you know, big concern. Um, and, but we all know the, the most important thing for the preservation of the quality of water is, is the keeping the, the trees and, and the growth, the vegetation there on the, on the, on the banks and, and all as far away as possible. So.
If I can uh, offer just a couple of things on that. Um, one of the causes of erosion that we can see on. can see on the property already is trees along the brook that have fallen over, and the roots open up the, the riverbank, and, and it, it all kind of goes downhill from there. So there are, there are some dead trees, there are some that you can see that are overhanging enough that, that that will happen, so I think we'll need to do some remediation just to, just to keep that. I think keeping the root mass in place is probably more important than, than keeping the overhanging tree. But, you know, we, when the woodland management plan that we've done, timber harvesting was not a priority at all, it's not, not a factor in, in the trees that he's marked. I'd also say that we've, we've retained Gartland Dorsey to do quality control on all the infrastructure work, so they'll be there with us, making sure that the contractors follow the plan.
Yep.
I live there, and I'll be really pissed off, so.
And Allison has an open invitation, so, yeah.
Once the first house gets built, maybe I'll live there.
Who knows? And, and, you know, something to think about, but, but it, it might behoove, as Allison suggested, having someone from one of the local organizations come in and take a look at the stream and, and offer any suggestions. I'm sure they'd be happy to do it, and, and they probably would not charge you for it.
Yeah, I think they would be very open to, I know they would, be very open to accepting that.
That, and, and being able, having an opportunity to give input.
Any suggestions, any ideas they want to have, I'm sure we can implement them.
Yeah. Ethan, since we're talking environmental issues, water quality stuff, and maybe now's a good point, good time to just touch base on the provision and the ordinance that allows.
Oh, the stormwater?
The town to, to hire a third-party engineer of sorts to review the stormwater plan, stormwater treatment plans, and that is something, a decision you guys need to make, and I'd like you to make that. Be my recommendation that we do that. There's, money goes into escrow from the developer to pay for that third-party review. The ordinance allows for you to do that, it, it does say that, you know, to review for compliance with the entire subdivision ordinance, I don't think that's necessary, I think that's probably overly burdened some. I think we should limit it to stormwater and drainage, and I think if you can take action to, you know, move that forward, that would be helpful, that way the developer knows that, and I've already reached out to a couple engineers that I know to see if they have the ability and time to do it. No one's got the time right now to do it, so I'm gonna reach out if you make that recommendation and make that vote today to do that, then I'll, I'll get moving on that. And I spoke with Andrew about it, he recommended somebody else, and I, I know those folks that he recommended. So I think we can try to keep this limited and focused on, on, you know, drainage and stormwater. Obviously, those plans aren't fully developed yet, but that's something that you have the ability to do, and being stormwater and, and water quality being a concern, I think we should, should move on that.
Yep.
I was gonna just say, you know, we're, we're more than willing to do, you know, anything reasonable to, to make sure that it meets the requirements of the, of the zoning and, of the board. I just ask that timing's very critical to us, and that we need to try and hit our start date for construction.
Yeah, and so if you could just help me out with that, we're, we're in the winter months now, and so I heard that, that we're looking to get through the permitting process is winter, and then what, start, start work sometime in April, May, is that the idea here?
Yeah, we had planned to bring the, the application back for preliminary review, which will have the next level, the real design work. We're gonna, we were hoping to submit on February thirteenth for the March first planning board meeting for preliminary review, and then we would need the next month for the final to be able to incorporate any, any of our findings during the preliminary. You know, knowing what I know about the, the engineers, it is, it's difficult to find anybody available to do anything right now, and, and that is, that's a big concern we have, is we won't have those design-level plans prepared and finalized until the final meeting. We'll have a very good ninety percent level of designs for that preliminary, and those would be suitable to begin to review, but that puts that into March before they're really gonna be able to, to start and review it. So it does give us a little bit of window before they could start reviewing it, but there's a, there's gotta be a quick turnaround there if we're gonna be at the, the April Planning Board to move forward. But again, we'll, we'll make it work however it needs to, and what the board recommends.
Allison, I will do the whole thing for you next week.
Perfect, perfect.
So as far as the process here, first, are there any more questions from the board for the applicant? And anyone from the public have any further questions? Go ahead. Up to the podium if you like.
Could you touch on the fire district's role in this, in the review of the road geometries?
Yeah, so, so EMS will be provided with this plan as part of that preliminary review, that next level, for them to review and approve before we can go forward. We'll have to deal with the fire protection, where the closest distance is, and basically have them sign off on that before we go forward.
Right, and as far as the road waiver request to twelve feet, it still allows for emergency vehicles to pass.
Oh, oh, absolutely, it'll, the, the final width will be sixteen feet, so we're gonna propose twelve feet of travelway, and then we'll still have our two-foot shoulders in that area, so you'll be able to get an emergency vehicle down there, a standard vehicle somewhere in like the seven-and-a-half-foot wide range, you know, it's standard parking space is nine feet, but usually you can get a compact one about eight, so there'll be plenty of room there to get a couple of vehicles to pass each other. Just enough to force them to slow down, pay attention, and, and sneak by there.
And, and you have that turnaround at the end for them.
And there'll be a turnaround large enough to, you know, if there's a delivery truck, a fire engine or something like that, they can, they can get around there, exactly.
Okay.
I've already asked Code Officer Clint and Chris Farley to look at that, make sure we're good, so that they've got it ahead of time before their preliminary plan is moved forward.
Anything further over here? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody.
You were talking about parking, so these are real people living in what could be a year-round home, and there are two parking places, one fairly near each home, and one a little more communal, right? So.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll both be somewhat communal parking spaces, so we're gonna try to.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah, we'll try to get them close, so like, for example, this unit right here will provide these three units with parking, so it'll be an outdoor and an indoor, and we'll cluster those all together and provide parking in close proximity, within a few hundred feet is the goal.
So is this going to allow for the inevitable party?
Yes, we're gonna add some overflow parking as well.
They really are designed for like, it's like a sinker, it's not overplayed at all.
Yeah, so the, the parking goal will be to have, will have some overflow visitor parking there as well, so we'll, we'll tuck them in, we'll probably put, you know, a couple of two or three car, you know, outdoor parking areas, kind of hide them in along the project, so everybody knows where they are, it'll say visitors, and the owners will know where they are as well, just to share.
Okay, well, I, I feel a little dumb bringing it up, because you would have thought of that, but.
Well, we don't have it on this plan, but it'll be there, we've thought of it along the way, yep.
All right, well, I guess, to the extent that we actually had a public informational meeting, we, we will close that now. Yeah, well, the, the board has to review, but that's, is that part of the public informational meeting?
You're gonna close that?
I was just closing the meeting part, right, like the input, the, the.
We got slightly out of sync.
Oh, yeah, we're just a little bit, you know, we've, we've been, we've been on break for a while, so.
Sorry, are you guys providing access to the state park at all?
No, there's no public access to come down through there, that's proposed, quite honestly. There's existing trails that lead into the state park that some of their landowners may choose to utilize, but there isn't an intention right now to connect that, make it a state or, or public access at this point.
Just comment on that, I have heard from the state park, not about this project, but about other connections to the state park that are on people's property, and it really frustrates the state park, because there is an entrance fee that pays for park upkeep, and a lot of people in town access the state park from their private property without paying to enter the park. So if there's a way, I'm just throwing this out there, if there's a way to encourage your new owners to, you know, get a park pass or something along those lines.
We've actually already negotiated with the state on this.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
So will the condo association will pay a fee to the park to cover any of those expenses and provide us access.
Okay, so we have some determinations to make. The first one on here, Jeremy, is contour intervals, I'm a little confused by that one.
What are you confused about?
The contour intervals, what is the?
What are we required to prove?
What are we required to identify on that?
Yeah, the contour intervals, you have to show, our plan has to include contours that are up to, I think it's two feet in the ordinance, two-foot intervals, we use one-foot interval contours, so we're, we're definitely.
We just have to find that you included those.
Exactly, that we've included them, it's pretty straightforward, yes.
All right, you ready for a motion? You didn't think you had to make any?
Well, I will say that, yeah, that I find, I find that the contour intervals have been provided.
Is there a second? Microphone? I'm gonna be the microphone police up here.
So we're not showing contours on the whole property yet.
No, just where the development itself is.
Just where the development itself is, okay. All right, that's all.
And when we come back for the next round of things, there'll be proposed contours on there as well, that'll show the limits of disturbance and all of that, so it'll be much more detailed. Right there is just the existing contours, but we'll expand on that significantly when we come back for the next round.
I guess, I think it would help, I mean, if we were talking about sloping or anything that goes towards the brook, and we're talking about erosion control, it would be helpful to see those contours too.
Yeah, I think what Pat is asking for, contours on the other side of the road towards the brook.
Right.
Yeah, we have, we can show them, we have LiDAR data available for that area, which is, is pretty accurate, the stuff that you see on the plan is actual survey topo, we believe it's more accurate than the LiDAR, but I think to satisfy that general need, it should be sufficient to, we'll incorporate the LiDAR data through that area, which is just general topography, it's pretty accurate, like I said, but you get a tree cover, it gets a little inaccurate, but it'll show sloping and, and whatnot for, for where we are, we can absolutely add that.
Even, even just a blown-up version of the, the topo map gives a little bit more than.
Right, no, we, we have it, we, in, in fact, we started with LiDAR, we have the whole site in LiDAR already, we'll just incorporate that into our plan, so everybody can see the full topo, and when we're looking for tops of hills and whatnot, it'll be easy to identify.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
We did find that the USGS topos didn't match the stream location very well, so there was some deviation there.
It's been a while since they made that map. Yes.
Fair assumption. And as a board, have we requested any additional submissions? I guess, I guess, you know, we haven't talked as a board, so I don't know where you all are on the, on the deer habitat and the, the possibility of requesting a biological study on the site. You know, my, I'm still trying to square, I'm still trying to see how it, how, how much it would negatively impact the schedule that you've set, insofar as we're in the winter, you're permitting in the winter, the only thing that would happen that would set back your schedule is if something were discovered to say, this is really critical, this area where you're planning to do something, and, you know, looking at what you've tried to do, it looks like that's not going to be the case, which I appreciate, but I just, I'm curious as to how it slows you down.
I, I think it, it is simply, it's unknown what it's gonna take to get in there to review that, it's unknown if they're gonna be able to come to some determination in one year. What Keel indicated is that it can be a several-year-long process to get a true reading from that, they, they don't do these often, but I, I would love to have him, you know, hear that you're recommending a study and be able to allow him to present what his thoughts are before we make a final determination, if that's what you want to go in. But I, I do, I, I know I'm, I'm kind of arguing against the study here, but just, just to put it into perspective, just to put it into perspective, I'm trying to find my eighty-scale here, the only area, I'm gonna draw right on this plan, actually.
You got an eighty-scale on there?
Yeah, well, forty times two, so, so the, so here, here is the, here is the wooded, the, the hardwood area, right there, so the only area that we would be impacting for deer wintering yard is essentially this tiny area right there. So, so that area is less than an acre in size, it's this tiny little area, we're proposing to preserve the rest of this, so essentially we'd be studying and having to acquire a biologist to investigate one acre of, of land out there that's directly adjacent, has two woods roads through it, it, honestly, we've been out there, there's not a lot of, I didn't see any evidence of deer in this area, once you get into the back and over in this area, you can start seeing it, but it's not a desirable location, I'm not an expert, but it's not a desirable location, usually this time of year, you can go out there, you see where they are, you can tell, even though there's not a lot of snow, you can tell how much deer are out there, but I, I see more on my front lawn than I have out here, to be honest with you, I think they're all in the back, because this is where all the land is.
Right.
There's acres and acres, they don't come forward, this is a pretty significant ravine, and it wraps all the way around, so that ravine comes down, so they really don't have a lot of desirable locations, but I just wanted to say that before we made any decisions.
I'm hearing you and, and listening.
My, my, my thinking is like, and I, I mean, we've dealt with this, my family and other, other projects, like you said, like, we're into winter now, so to do a winter study, it's not gonna happen this, it wouldn't happen this year, it's a really, really hard thing to prove, but I'm wondering if, if we could get Keel to do a bit of a more formal version of this email, I know you said that he's been on other things, to sort of clarify that it's a relatively small impact of the whole piece, you know, we're looking at, like, beyond your property, that dotted blue line goes, you know, way, you know, so out of, out of the entire designated area.
This is the part here, here's our site, and that, that wintering area is right there.
But, but how much of the wintering area is beyond your property, like, so that, so that we're really looking at a very, very small.
Yeah.
My new.
Part of the entire wintering area. I mean, to me, it seems something we want to be, but I feel like if we could get him to cut, either in writing, a little bit more of a formal.
And that's exactly what he planned to do, he wanted to, he wanted us to go through this process, and he was hoping an email would kind of get this discussion started, which it has, and then we can kind of formalize.
I mean, I think for me, that would be the.
I guess, I guess for me, just, just, just to follow up, and I appreciate the, the input, and, and I am listening and hearing, the, the language in the, in the email that, that is, to me, that, that sort of gets my, you know, antennae up, is considered, it may also be considered a candidate for deer wintering area for consideration as moderate or high-value DWA, and thus a significant wildlife habitat under NRP.
Right.
Right? So does that, what, what is that, you know, not, not having worked practice law for some time, what is, what is that, does that trigger anything under NRP, or is it just saying that it's designated as such?
It would simply be a significant habitat, and you would have to get the proper permits to go through it, you'd need an NRPA permit and have them rule on that before you made any impacts to those areas. But that language is in there, simply to ensure that, that he's got everything covered, quite honestly, that's in case a biologist goes out there and says, ah, there's, you know, five thousand deer that roost right here, and that, that's his way of kind of going through that, but.
Yeah, and then if someone was going through the DEP, because that's where the NRP permits are, through DEP, DEP would then hand it over to IFNW to Keel.
Right, go right back to him, right.
Would likely recommend exactly what he's saying here, limit your impact in the, you know, in the, you know, forested area, and just try to limit your development into the deciduous areas, and I think that's what they're proposing to do.
That, that's exactly, all the, all the agencies would end up going back to Keel for review, if we needed to do a wetland permit, same situation, if we're doing a stormwater permit, same situation, he would end up reviewing this as IFNW, he'd see the impacts of the deer wintering area, he would make the determination, and that would be included in the permit, which would be, as Jeremy said, these items.
I would agree with Chris, though, that it would be good to get more information from him, even if he could come in to our next meeting or something, I, I don't know what.
He's, he's pretty busy, quite honestly, I'm not sure he's usually available to do meetings, I know, like, you can't even call him, you have to email him, because he's, I was on the phone with him the other day, and he said he had eleven calls come in while I was talking to him for twenty minutes, so it just tells you at, at what high demand he is, so I would, I would hesitate to get him into the meeting, but I think we could definitely get. So I would, I would hesitate to get him into the meeting, but I think we could definitely get a formalized letter from him. And he would be more than willing to answer any calls or any questions that the board may have.
I think this sort of, you know, feeds into my concern. And again, the state is overworked and understaffed, we know that, right? And so that's when, you know, that's when there's a, you know, the possibility, the specter of a full biological study is raised because the state doesn't have time to do that, right? And so the, you know, sort of explaining to me that, well, he doesn't have time to do this stuff, he can't do it, almost makes me feel like we need somebody to look at it. And so, you know, that's just, again, the way I look at it. So, you know, I may not have the agreement of the whole board on this. But I guess what I would ask, or I will make a motion, and the board can either, is to find out what is involved and whether a study is practical, practicable this season.
Can, can I ask the question, that I always ask as the engineer? What is that study going to demonstrate? What is that going to protect? They may identify that deer are present, and then if deer are present, the change is not going to change the proposed solution.
Well, it's going to change whether or not you're required to get a permit under NRP.
If, if we propose to impact that area.
That's right.
So if we propose to impact an area beyond that, if it's determined to be a special significance habitat, correct?
If that area that you, that triangle area that you circled on there said.
That acre of land, yes.
Right? If that came back as being considered a significant wildlife habitat under NRP.
Right.
Then you would be required to get a NRP permit.
We would, to cut the trees down, correct, yes.
And whether or not, and whether or not, and that would open you up to a public review process.
Yep, just like any NRPA, correct.
Exactly, so then you might have, you know, someone come in and say, you know, I oppose this for these reasons, or whatever. And I'm not saying that they should or shouldn't. I'm just, again, for me, it's about, you know, it's the language in here that's, you know, that's talking about indeterminate candidate for consideration as moderate or high value, or, and thus a significant wildlife habitat. And I don't like just sort of saying, well, it's just a small piece of it. That doesn't, that to me doesn't, because an acre, or just under an acre, to me, isn't that, I mean, I understand that this is a large, a huge swath, but we don't know how critical it is.
Yeah, if I could offer a suggestion that, that you talk directly with, with him. In our early discussions with Mr. Keel, he's really quite straightforward about the nature of these. They're really advisements to the town, they're not requirements. And I think, I think maybe you could straighten this out on a phone call.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing is, you know, when we.
Somebody else besides Keel who's available in his same capacity that we could speak to, who is maybe more readily available?
Keel's the one that would do this. I've known Keel for 25 years as well, and worked with him, and actually been friends with him, actually lived in the house of his, and going way back. I can, I'll certainly reach out to Keel as well. I talked to him previously when, when Ed first brought this, first came to meet with me, before he even hired Gartley and Dorsey. I think the question came up. That's when the property owner called me, that Ed bought it from, and said, what are you, what does this mean? I'm, I have a, you know, deer wintering area on my property? The property owner still, no one knows this. I mean, I'm just getting back to this, this is, you know, this is aerial surveys, how they do this. They just look at, you know, I mean, that's why this hardwood area is included in it, because they did an aerial survey. And they just circled on a map and said, yep, here's a very large, you know, evergreen area, coniferous forest, and we're going to include it. I can reach out to Keel myself, I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, Andy will. I'll do it, I'll express your concerns to them and to him and ask, you know, like, I'll get something from him that I, I think you will be content with. I had this conversation with him again, when, when this first came to my attention.
I will just, I will just suggest that, that my level of contentment would be somebody being on site, not, not looking at it from an aerial photograph. And it doesn't mean that they're going to go there and, and sit there for, for 72 hours and watch for deer.
I'll see what I can do to get Keel down here.
But I, yeah, I just, I guess that's my comfort level. Yeah.
Yeah, and as far as getting a biologist in to study this, I mean, you know, I'm trying to get a, an engineer to come in and do a third party review on the stormwater and erosion control. I've already called two, they're booked out until late summer, they can't do it. So if you're talking about trying to get someone to assess, do a full on assessment, like Andrew's talking about this, you know, and they have to be done in the winter, and it's four to five months and multiple years. And I'm not trying to poo-poo the concern about.
Well, I don't think that's a sad thing that it has to be a multi-year study, does it? I mean.
If there's no definitive evidence, absolutely. You know, you take a year like this.
Right.
With low snowfall, you're not going to see any standard habitat. So it could prolong until you have a big winter, if you will, before you actually see anything in the habitat.
Well, we have the term in front of us, full biological study, right? Is there a partial biological study? You know, is, I mean, again, I'm just talking about somebody being on site to actually take a look at it.
Just to attest to that, Keel has been on these sites, he has been at the state park, he has been all through that wintering area. And he did not believe a biological study was needed or even recommended for this. He specifically said that to me. He's very familiar with this area, he's been through all of Camden in all of these sites. So he knew this very specific area that we're talking about. He may not have been on that site, but he's been on the contributing 5,000 acres, you know, that's all protected and kind of in this, this park area, quite honestly. So, so he is familiar with it. I mean, again, I, I understand it, but it's when, when I called him to look for guidance, and he says, you shouldn't really need to do that. He was frustrated that, honestly, that the towns incorporate deer wintering yards into the special significance habitat because nobody classifies them as special significance.
I think our ordinance, and just to clarify, I think our ordinance says significant wildlife habitat, or important habitat, I think is what it says.
Says, yeah, special significance, and then you, and then you lump the deer wintering yard using language for a special and significant habitat. It's not generally associated with that in any of the DEP rulings. They don't ever classify deer wintering yards as significant or high or critical values. They just don't do that at the state. It's unnecessary, they usually come up with some recommendations rather than quote unquote classifying the area.
And I can also tell you, you know, as, as a developer, you know, we looked at this before we acquired the property. And it was the conversations we had early on with inland fisheries and wildlife that made us comfortable moving forward. If we had thought that we were going to have to go through a multi-year biological study of the property, probably wouldn't have purchased it.
Is this close to? I can't say anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done with the, the public part of the hearing.
I just have a point to make. He does offer up, Keel does in his fourth bullet point, the, a suggestion, I think, I take it as a suggestion, to consider that area be, be managed in perpetual state for the softwood component. Is that something that you'd consider doing, some sort of a covenant?
Oh, absolutely. I think at, at the, at the end here, what, when we get through the open space, the subdivision review, the, we're anticipating this entire back section. Let me, I don't know if you can see it, but this entire, I'm going to draw it black. This entire back section of the property, something like this is anticipated. This whole section here is anticipated to be put in, put in protected forever. You know, so that we're not going to put any residences, nobody will be able to develop that area. And that was, these are the exact things I sent plans back and forth with Keel. It wasn't a simple email. I mean, I spoke to Keel three or four times on this, we had a significant email exchange. This was not like a Saturday afternoon thing or something that he was responding to. This was a quite in-depth review that he did go through. So we sent him a plan, showing him exactly what we're talking about, and then to the public, just so you guys can see. Here's the deer wintering area, it's this entire area. I think it was about 20 acres of land that was this entire back section that was going to be preserved, that would be contiguous with the existing deer wintering yards through there. And he thought that would be an excellent way to, to kind of balance allowing development within this area, but then preserving that back section forever.
Do you want to show the other side, the aerial that you, you have?
Just as a follow-up to that, what is the mechanism you use for protection? Do you plan to?
Just to clarify.
So it'll be, so they'll be shown on a plan, so the subdivision plan will include those areas, and it'll be preserved, and it'll be in the covenants and descriptions. So it'll have to be something that's actually recorded that will forever protect that.
And that's something, since that would be something that is part of the approval process, those covenants, that's something that the town could enforce as well. So if in the future, Ed and everyone are gone, and then the new owners are all gone, and we're on the third stretch of owners, and it comes to our attention that someone's in there cutting wood, that would be an enforcement action that the town can take against the subdivision.
So you're talking, oh, okay.
I was just going to say, in comparison, this area we're talking about, it's about right there.
So you just outlined this lower portion of the area that you would put into.
Yeah, so everything, everything along that section there, yeah.
What about all of the coniferous areas up here? Can you just cut it right here and put that in protection also?
What we're looking to do is just that lower portion at this point. There's about a 28, there's a 20 acre portion of this that we're preserving in that backland to avoid any future development or anything like that. That's what the developers would like to do, and that's what we proposed to Keel, and he found that very amenable.
And so what is the plan then for all this other area?
It is to be determined, you know, at, at this point, it's unknown, we don't know the path forward. We haven't, we've looked at other options to kind of go forward and see what's happening there. This, this is, this is a development that they're putting in place. As, as this phase, they're going to see what happens, how it's receptive, and then they can proceed, so.
So there could be future phases?
There absolutely could on this development, yeah. So the ordinance allows up to 32 residential units in that, in that zone.
Yeah, I think that would have been helpful information at the outset.
We don't know what we're doing.
I understand that, but at the same time, you can say that they're, we're leaving open the possibility for development of this entire swath of land, which I don't think was made clear to the board.
I think your ordinance indicates that. We had no intention of hiding anything, we don't know what we're doing moving forward. What we're presenting is, is this phase of the project, if, if it goes beyond this, wonderful. That means it's been very successful, and they can proceed to the, to put a few more units in there. But there's, there's no intention to, to fill this thing with tons of units, put what they need in there. It's all going to be this minimalistic approach. If, if they're successful, they may do another wing of it and throw a few more units in there.
And what, what covenants would apply to that part of the land to ensure that?
The, the back protection.
This part, the, the part that we're now discussing, which is the.
Yeah, we would work with, we would definitely work with Keel, incorporate the language. So DEP and IFNW have like kind of standard language to protect those lands, and we would clarify that, determine the boundaries of those locations, incorporate that language in the deed restriction, and it'd be recorded in the registry.
Would you consider doing it more as a, even putting it, doing something as, with an easement with land trust or something like that, that's more concrete, would you consider?
Yeah. The challenging is, is if you, yeah, you can definitely do an easement, it's just taking land away in what you want to do. So they want to hold their parcel of land and preserve what they can.
But you're still talking about the original area that you just described, not this area.
Correct.
Okay, because looking at the map, I mean, you do see enough coniferous sections of this.
There are, yes.
In the whole deer wintering area that you're saying could be further developed.
Potentially, correct.
I can say that the coniferous that's in that area, it's highly mixed, it's, it's not big stands. It's all detailed in our force measure.
Even though it's labeled, labeled as coniferous.
So our service, so what we, how we directed our surveyors is they went out there and they basically identify the canopy. They, they're out there, they're taking thousands of shots everywhere. So basically, when they came into a hardwood area that was of substantial size, not a tree or two, but have these areas that are extended, they would then kind of document the canopy of where it is and kind of get a general feel. So if, this is a very mature woods, which is desirable by deer. There's not a lot of undergrowth, it's very clear through there. But what this site has that makes it challenging and not desirable is, we believe, it was an old mining site of some sort. There's a lot of material that's been removed from this site historically. All these areas have these significant ravines and holes and pox everywhere, if you will, that prevent, you know, like, so it's all been disturbed, it was cut out, it's all naturalized, and there's trees growing in it now. But it's this up and down and very steep terrain, it's not like a pristine natural wood there. It's a lot of terrain of up and down. I think we can see that out on site, and then you can realize that, you know, if, if I was a deer, I'm not going to walk up a 25 foot cliff down to the other side, quite honestly. I think you can, you can see that they would be much, they would enjoy the back section of this area substantially more. Maybe.
We're hoping it's a gold mine.
Lithium.
Careful, don't, don't go there.
When, when you do the site walk, you'll see it's extremely steep along the brook up in here. Just, just very difficult to see how anything short of an Alpine goat would be able to get to water there. Out in here, the woodland comes right down to the brook level. So it's a real, out in this area, it's much nicer for wildlife, I think.
I'm not a biologist, by the way.
Okay, I'm not sure exactly how to proceed on, on this issue. I, I am open to having a conversation with Keel and to get his input. So I guess what we'll do is table that issue for now, pending that conversation and a site visit and that sort of thing.
Forgive me, but have you, were you going to vote on that as a board? It's hard to tell, quite honestly, where everybody stands. I know you're definitely.
No, I get it, I get it. And I'm, I'm saying that I'm not going to call for a vote on requiring a biologist at this moment until ending a conversation with Keel.
Okay.
What I would suggest, and, and, and this is a recommendation from me personally, and not from the entire board, is that you get somebody out there who can evaluate it without doing a full biological study. I'm not asking for a three-year study. I'm asking for somebody who is independent, who understands deer and deer habitat, and can come out there and say, you know, this is really a small piece. What concerns me then is to learn that this other area is still, you know, possibly contemplated for future development. And then this small piece becomes another small piece and another small piece, and then we've got death by a thousand cuts of all of the habitat. So I would like to know how valuable the habitat is that's being taken. And I'm not saying I'm requiring, and it certainly is not a board, board vote, that we're requiring a full biological study, but I would like to have somebody on the ground, take a look at it. That's what I'm recommending that you do. You cannot do it because it's not a board, a board vote and order. But we may end up down the line having that vote, especially after a site visit. So, you know, I just would recommend maybe trying to get somebody in there to look at it. But I will also be happy to have a conversation with Keel and share that with the board, or other members of the board may want to talk. So I think we're on that.
Just sort of along those lines, like, we had talked about, as Allison mentioned, getting someone like from Trout Unlimited to come and look at the brook and make some recommendations. If there was a biology professor at UMaine, who someone knows who could come, would that sort of?
Yeah.
Be sufficient to.
Exactly what I'm talking about, yeah.
So maybe there's someone that.
You know, someone, Chris O.
Well, I'm just thinking even through corporate extension, you know, my, there might be.
I can make some phone calls tomorrow as well.
Who could do that, that, you know, it's not, you know, if that would sort of breach the two.
Yeah.
Of having someone come out and.
I'd also say that, you know, we can clearly delineate the areas that wouldn't be developed. So regardless of any future plans, I think we can be quite concrete about, about the areas that be protected.
Up here, on the, on the, on the, on the top half? Yeah. I think that would be helpful.
Well, we can, we can only act on what's being applied for now, so.
Right, no, I get that, but it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, I know, I, I get what you're saying too.
Yeah. Okay, so the next, I don't think we're requiring any other additional submissions at this time. Anyone?
No.
Okay, so we have to.
Formally, do you want some, you want some, someone like Jeff Reardon from Trout Unlimited or one of their local chapters to just take the look at the brook?
I guess that's why we're rolling in, that's right.
Initial submissions are that we're asking to have somebody look at the trout, look at the deer. Other things we'll get in, I mean, all right, we're going to get sign off from.
Want to make a motion on that?
I was just saying, like, we're going to get the usual, we'll have sign off from fire department on road and all that, that's just.
That's all part of it, yeah.
So we don't need to ask for that now. But yeah, I would make a motion that we ask for a third-party review on the trout and the deer.
Oh, and the deer, you're saying now too.
Yeah, but as I said, I mean, something along the lines of.
Right.
You know, maybe somebody.
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Yeah, I, I've got some ideas on the, on the deer folks that I can share with you, that you may be.
All in favor? Mark, we're not doing roll calls, we're not on Zoom anymore. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. So we will, we will request a additional, additional submissions, including third-party review trout and deer specialists.
So just kind of a general overview?
A hunter and a fisherman.
Yeah, right, well, it's, it's pretty open-ended, right, right, right.
It is, and I think you understand. It is, and I think you understand the intent. We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to identify.
I guess I would sort of modify that and say, we will also ask that we get Keel to give a formal.
I mean, he's the, the expert in the entire state of Maine, quite honestly.
Right.
He is the expert.
But if, if he could give a more formal version of that, of his findings in that email that would address some of these concerns, I think that would also help.
So we do the onsite from an independent, and then we have the response from Keel as well.
Should we have the conversation with Keel first to make sure that that's necessary? That may shorten the discussion, once you talk with him.
I mean, so, I, I think, I think we're, we're asking a pretty minimal thing here. We're not, we're not ordering a full biological study. Okay, and so I feel pretty comfortable, unless Keel wants to come down and be the person who does the deer review and say, I'm going to put my boots on that ground, and I'll go out there and meet with them, that's fine. But if, if he's not coming, then somebody else should.
The point where we're even is, and I think we are, is like to have somebody actually look at these, go and stand on the, on that piece of property and give as best an assessment as they can.
Because I mean, in this town, you probably can't throw a rock without hitting deer. They're everywhere. But it's, so it has to be somebody that can say that this is a.
Right, but you're looking, you know, it has been a mild winter. There's not a lot of snow tracks, but there's still, I mean, I can tell you where the turkeys have walked across our fields. I can tell you where the deer have gone through our, we have a highway in our backyard. And you can tell that, yes, there is a lot of activity, or there's really not. And that's, I think that's what we're.
Yep.
Looking for.
Yes.
Is that clear?
I just so you know, I mean, activity is not what a deer wintering area is.
That too, but.
Right? It's not about deer activity.
Yeah.
I mean, we know the park, right?
We'll, we'll definitely reach out to Keel. We'll try to see if we can find somebody. The, what, what I struggle is, is there's no, there's no defined determination here. So we're going to try to find somebody to identify the deer wintering area that doesn't have to have any certain qualifications or specialization. They're going to look at the site.
Well, not, it's.
Determination.
I don't think that's absolutely correct. Okay, so.
I would love some guidance. Tell us what their certification.
Want me to, I mean, I could, I could, I could amend the motion to say a wildlife biologist. Would that make you happier? I mean, I mean, the, the, the question is, you, you had no issue when Allison suggested you had someone come from Trout's Unlimited.
Right.
Right. So I think that there could easily be some other person who is in that line who is, you know, good at habitat for wildlife, who could come and look. Not, I'm not talking about a local hunter, and I'm not talking about somebody off the street. So if, if you need help determining that, Jeremy's already offered that. And I think that, you know, if, in concert with Jeremy, I think we can provide that information for you, some suggestions for you. But, but, I mean, we're, 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 you've got the full board here telling you that we have some concern about the nature of this habitat and how critical it is, and we're trying to be reasonable and work with you.
Is it that critical, though? I think that's your question.
That is the question. That's the only question. And.
And does their development, does their development, the way that they're proposing it, to limit development in the areas like they are, adequately protect that what we're deciding is.
But there's, there's an acre there that, that seems to be an issue, right?
That's, that's. So it's really about that acre.
What's that?
It's really about that acre at this point.
That's pretty much what we're talking about. Yeah, we're not trying to poo-poo the whole project, but we are talking about the, how, how important that one acre is. And, you know, we're not trying to, we're not trying to bog you down with this, but at the same time, we're trying to come to a reasonable compromise. Because certainly it's within our ability to order a full biological review, and we don't want to do that to you. We've understood that you're trying to move the project along, and, and I've learned some today that it could take years, okay? So that, you know, I'm not the expert on this, but neither are any, but is anybody else in this room?
I think Andrew was just trying to identify what, what type of person will give you a credible answer.
Right. Well, someone that, yeah, I think, I mean, I, well, I think it's, it's, I mean, it's, I think it's, it's sort of a logical thing, right? I mean, it's, it's not going to be somebody off the street. It's not going to be.
So if we're doing Trout Unlimited, can we do the Sportsman Alliance of Maine?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a false equivalency there, Jeremy.
It's a joke.
Yeah. Jeanie?
What you're really asking for is if that area should be further reviewed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's essentially what we're looking at, is, is, it does, are there enough, is there enough indication that it, that it would be critical? Is sort of, you know, whether or not, they, they're not going to determine that it's critical, but is there.
Further reviews are questioned, though.
I, I, I didn't get that out of this.
No, I don't think.
I mean, the, the, it's just leaving open the possibility that somebody comes in and says, you know, from my, you know, review over the last, you know, two hours of this, this plot, this looks like really important stuff. And we all think that's not going to happen, right?
It won't, correct.
Right.
Usually when you're out there, the deer don't creep up in there.
Well, but I mean.
It's a, it's a hard thing that my only, I apologize for being argumentative on this. My only thing is looking at it practically and how we accurately assess a deer wintering area if it's critical in a matter of a site visit with no snow. So I want to be able to deliver what you're asking us to, but to get a biologist out there, a wildlife expert to assess those areas, this one acre of land, assess it, be able to determine if you would accept that is, leads me back to Keel. Keel is the expert in the state. He knows this land. He's advised that you do not need a biologist out here. Here is what we're proposing at IFNW. The head of the state is doing this. This is what we're recommending. But we're bypassing his recommendation, who is the aforementioned expert in the entire state. All these people we're going to hire will call him and ask him questions. He is going to review this, and they're going to call him and ask him the same thing, and he's going to tell them the same thing. I've been to that site. I know that site. This is what we're going to recommend for that. So we're, we're kind of going in a circle here, because we have the guy at the top that reviews all of these areas, and the entire state kind of.
But, but he.
ignoring what he is recommending.
Right. But he's not, he's not actually review, he's not putting his boots on, on this lot, on this spot.
He, he may have. He's told me I've been through all of Camden, is what his, his comments were.
Well, so I, I mean, along those lines, you know, if, to me, if, if Keel has actually been, can say that he's been on the site, and, you know, actually in the property, not just in the general area, and can make that ruling, I think that would be.
I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I started out this whole thing by saying I'd like to talk to Keel. Right?
That's what it were, and then it was kind of added into the motion, right?
But, but, but Keel, but Keel's unavailable, and, and Keel is this.
No, he is, he is definitely available to chat to. It's, I, I don't think I can get him to a planning board in Camden, Maine at six o'clock at night.
No, I wonder if we can get him on the site, though, if that's, if that's at all possible.
He very well might be able to. If he knows it's causing this much controversy, I'm sure he would love to come to the site if he can.
Jeremy knows him very well, so. So.
So Ethan, your suggestion of wanting somebody to go out there periodically over some time, you're not.
Well, no, I mean, no, I'm, I'm, I'm really not. I think, I think we're, we're getting it sort of kind of far afield here. I understand that, that, that a full biological study would require at least several months of study, if not years. I understand that now. What I'm, what I'm sort of looking for is a much more generalized view of like, here's all this habitat. Here's this small piece of it where it looks like it could be really important, but in the, on balance, it's really not a big deal. Or they might say, you know, this is prime. It's really, you know, they're just looking at it. You can do that.
Well, my argument is Keel has already done that.
But, but no, he hasn't. I mean, he, he's given an opinion.
Well, I think that.
And, and, and I think that's where.
We're just, we're just in a, if we could get, and maybe, you know, this is what I'm saying. Perhaps the solution is to have a conversation with Keel and get a more defined version, and we could maybe get that from him in the next few days of what he specifically knows about this, this very property. Has he been there?
Absolutely. That is very readily attainable, absolutely.
Let's start there.
I have no, we have no argument with that.
If he's been on the ground, if he knows the property and he's been there, would that, doesn't that suffice the?
He, he, the language from his own, from his own email states, "It has not had a formal survey under wintering conditions." It is best described, wait, I'm going on, "It is best described as indeterminate value, but may be considered a candidate for DWA for considerations moderate or high-value DWA, and thus is significant wildlife habitat under NERPA." Then he goes on to provide his opinion, and it doesn't say, you know, based on being on the site.
Nope.
That, that his opinion is that, that this is how you can sort of elite, you know, sort of work around, you know, affecting the habitat too severely. And you guys have, have taken that to, to heart, and I get that.
Right.
So I, I'm really not trying to be overly, here's my word, draconian on this. But there's too much indeterminate in this language for my comfort, and.
But he cleans it up at the end, though. I mean, there's my last comment, I promise on this. But he, he even acknowledges that there may be high or significant wildlife habitat in there. He acknowledges that. But then at the end, he says, "If these steps are taken, we will not need to consider a formal deer wintering area survey." He clearly says that it might have high habitat, but it's not, he's not that concerned with it. And he says that right in the email, and he says, "We do not need a deer wintering area survey."
Just to go back to my original idea of getting him to respond.
Certainly.
Even quick, even if, if we have, if he responds to, just quickly to Jeremy and says, you know, first of all, has he actually been on site? But if we can get the formal, because I, I understand what you're saying about that first bullet point, that may be, may, may also may be considered is kind of, I, I, I'm not ruling it out. I don't read that as there's a likelihood. So if we could get clarification on that first point, and some formal represent, you know, an indication of, has he been on the site, I think that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's going to be hard for him to be able to state with certainty that he's been on this exact site. I mean, I.
Well, I mean, that's my.
I bet he has. I bet he has been. I bet he has been.
It seems like.
I'll, we'll start with Keel tomorrow morning.
We, we certainly do not mind to doing that at all. Let's work with Keel if we can keep it there. What it does question is the last motion that approved and required us.
We're still asking for, I mean, I said that earlier on, of getting a more formal version of his email.
Yep.
So what we're asking for is, is an assessment on the deer and the, and the.
Certainly, so that would, that would satisfy your, your needs for the.
We're looking for someone who's qualified. I would say that he probably is.
Okay.
Right.
Right?
Perfect.
And doesn't exclude Keel from doing.
No. But the question really was, was about boots on the ground, from my perspective, not an aerial survey.
Right.
That's what, that's where my concern is. And I haven't even been out to the site. So, you know, I could look at it. I mean, I don't know anything about deer wintering area, but I could look at it and say, and on balance with the whole area around and say, well, this is just a small area. You know, I get it.
Right, understand.
You know, but, but I, it's just, there's too much nebulous language.
That's, that's absolutely fair.
From my, from my comfort level.
We'll have him.
Keel's been in the regulatory world a long time. That's why his first few bullets are the way they are.
Well, right, and, but, but this is.
Understood. I got it.
We've already, I've already raised the point of overwork state employees.
Yep.
Right, understaffed, and, and forgive me for not always thinking that the state has everybody's best interest at heart.
Fair enough. I do look forward to the site walk, because I think when you see that acre, you'll understand.
All right.
Speaking of which.
Speaking of which.
We are, that's a great segue to our next point.
A motion, a motion from you guys to, for, for, to hire a third-party, recommendation to hire a third-party engineer.
That's after the date of site walk on our.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Act for.
Yeah, so we're, 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 are we, are we clear on the, Gene, do we feel like we're clear on the first, the first motion that we've already had? Are we okay with that one?
Ask for a third-party review.
For, of the trout and deer, yeah. Are we, are you comfortable with the language now?
That's fine, yes. Yep, now let it hear. Yep, simple as that, yes.
Okay. So we are on to date of the site walk with the great segue.
I can't do anything until after the seventeenth, because we're out of town.
Okay.
So eighteenth?
How soon do we need to do this, Jeremy?
I'm out of town the eighteenth, actually.
For how long?
Within two weeks of today.
I've got Massachusetts for the day. I was going to actually come back.
Can we do the nineteenth?
Oh, yeah.
Are you back by the nineteenth?
Nineteenth?
I was hoping to stay out there on the nineteenth and come back the twentieth, but if I had to cut it short, I could.
That was the twentieth work for timing.
That's a Friday, right?
Yeah.
That should be.
Twentieth still work for everyone and within our schedule? It should. I know.
The sooner the better, given that we have a lot of foot of snow.
Just, when are you out of town?
I'm not going to get a foot of snow.
Tomorrow through.
We're going to get six inches of rain. The twentieth is fine for me. How?
Seems like that's the earliest we can get the full board there, is on the twentieth. Motion?
Well, well, what time do we want to? I have a feeling this will be a fairly, this won't be a quick.
Yeah, I think.
Site walk.
It's, it's readily accessible, that's for sure.
No, no, I mean, but some, some of them, we're standing and we're looking at.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, it'll be.
We're in a hundred yards, you know, like, this is, we've got some.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Afternoons.
Well, that's the next, so what time of day?
I don't know if your process is to see the entire property or only see the area.
No, we're just looking at the.
Development area. An hour easily to walk the entire.
Yeah, mostly just the area right around where the development's going to occur.
The road, the buildings.
They may want to walk down to the stream, you know, that sort of thing, but.
I wouldn't necessarily more myself, though, so I could always stay.
Walk into the acre of deer area?
What time of day are we looking at?
You said you had a conflict.
Actually, I'm clear on the twentieth. I was thinking of another, another week.
Okay.
Twenty, any time on the twentieth is fine.
So.
I recommend the morning, because you start to lose because of the amount of sun.
Yep. Uh, how does, you want to say ten o'clock?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Nine o'clock.
Give the time, the sun time to warm up a little bit?
Ten AM on the twentieth.
I don't think we need a motion for that one. That's just a.
Scheduling.
Scheduling issue.
Good.
Okay, that order of business is taken care of and swiftly. That's good.
Hiring.
Whether we want to, whether the board wishes to hire an outside consultant. Jeremy has recommended that we hire someone to review the stormwater plans. We have heard from the applicant. They expect those plans to be ninety percent complete and ready for review around the first of March. Is that right? And so the hope would be that that's expedited review. We're still hoping we can get anybody. But yes.
I'm, I'm going to make some phone calls tomorrow.
Yeah. Do you have a motion for that one?
I would make a motion that we hire a, or ask for, ask for an outside consultant to review the stormwater plans.
And that comes, there's an ASCO agreement that they have to work with the town attorney on it, and we'll, I'll work with that and get that rolling.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. So ordered, or so requested. Now we get to set a date for the public hearing, given that we have the site walk on the twentieth. Do we have some scheduling concerns there? They obviously would like it as soon as possible.
Recommended a schedule that works for them.
Yeah.
So that would be March first.
It'd be the March first meeting, yeah.
Okay.
We need to have a, and are we going to, at that same hearing, have a hearing to, for a design standard waiver? Isn't that where that has to happen?
Well, it doesn't sound like they're going to have to.
I know, that's sort of. Well, we'll be in with a preliminary designs, like, the two weeks prior to that. I forget the date now, the February. Yeah, the thirteenth, yep.
Right, we have to have a hearing to waive. This is under article, article. Yeah.
Eleven.
Eleven. Two thirty-five, eleven point two. So.
It's a Wednesday. Did you mean the Thursday?
The second.
No, they were moving Wednesdays and Thursdays around due to conflict with the Rome. Is that still the case?
Yeah, Rome's very limited.
It will be Wednesday.
So those submissions are coming in on the fourteenth, thirteenth or fourteenth. The next week is school vacation. The end of that week, the Camden Conference has the the room. The only day you could do it is the 15th, and that gives you one day to look at those plans.
And this is just for a hearing for the waiver request?
Yeah. They'll need to see those the plans, and Chris and everybody will need a chance to review them. So.
Yeah, because this is the road, the the road waiver.
Yeah, it's the road width waiver.
Yeah.
Just the width waiver.
Right.
Just the road width.
Well, and the.
That's not a waiver.
It would be that it's really, it's three. It's three items. It's the the road width for the driveway that we're requesting basically about a two foot reduction on. And then the elevation, the slope.
Right.
To increase the grade to 12% for less than 100 feet.
Section of the road.
Yep, and then to allow the road to remain.
That's not a waiver, though. That's not technically.
No, you're you're absolutely correct. It's a. It's a review by the planning board. So technically, I think they could review on it tonight and approve it because it's not an official.
I think we'll just look at that when we're on site on the 20th.
Okay.
And about the the grade?
No, we're talking about the 65, 60 foot wide piece of the road that is with the using the existing road.
Okay.
Building new roads. That's technically not a waiver that they're asking for, so.
So but we're we're talking about two different dates, though, because we're talking about a hearing on the waivers and a hearing on the.
Correct, and that's what I want to make sure we got a hearing on the waivers lined up, too.
So the road width is not a waiver?
No, uh, no, the road width is.
But I don't.
It's the setback. The setback issue is the one that's not a waiver.
Correct.
Is the elevation a waiver, even though it's permissible in the ordinance? It wouldn't really be a waiver from.
The setback is not the wa is not a waiver.
That wouldn't be either.
No, I think. I think it's just the one waiver.
It's just the one.
That's the one that's not the waiver.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it clear.
Trying to help her clarify. So the the waiver request would be the subdivision road width.
That's it.
And what about the the slope?
That's not a waiver.
Not a waiver either. So one waiver request.
Yep.
The other two are things that are within our purview to approve.
Yep.
Got it.
Given that it's just the one question and that we know what it is.
Can we have that hearing next Friday and the 20th onsite?
No, the waiver.
I know.
That has to be a public hearing.
Right.
So could that be the 13th, which would? I mean, yeah, it's only a day, but.
Um, I think.
It's a pretty straightforward.
There's a time frame.
Because a public hearing as well.
10 days ahead and stuff. I don't think you can do it next week.
Wait, I'm just trying to. I mean, they've got a lot riding, a lot of design riding on that waiver, right? And if we can do, maybe can we do the site walk on the 20, on the Monday, the 23rd or whatever, and technically do the formal public hearing onsite? I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, I I don't.
It's a. It's. All it is is it's a open the hearing to entertain the waiver requests with reduce the width of the road.
You're gonna have no public participation in that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think that's that's.
I'm just drawing out an option. It's a very simple thing.
I get it, but but.
If I may interject, I we would be willing to kind of get a general feel. I'd love to understand how you're feeling on this and if you would be receptive to allowing it. And with that general feel, I think we could go forward with the understanding and do the designs and and with the risk that it may not be approved when we get to that point. We would understand that.
I can't think of a good reason to not allow a narrower road on the property personally.
Do it at that.
You know, and I don't.
I have no objections to making roads smaller.
And as long as, as long as we get, for me, it's like, you know, obviously the sign off from Chris and and whatever.
That's the key.
That's the only thing that matters to me. If if you're doing less disturbance, that's gonna work for me, so.
All right, we'll do it at the regular.
You've got a pretty good handshake agreement.
Hopefully, that gives us enough to to kind of go forward with the risk, understanding the risk.
Yes, yeah.
So then we could potentially push that all the way to that.
Do it on the regular first public hearing on the preliminary.
And we can incorporate any changes for the final.
Perfect. That's a good.
That's that's a good way to go. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah. Let's see. So we've got the date of the public hearing now set for 3:1. And we've got waivers on here. We just sort of discussed them all, so I don't think those will be determined at that public hearing.
So there'll be. There'll be two public hearings that night.
Okay, we have something else on the agenda?
No, you've got the public hearing for specifically for the waiver request and then the public hearing specifically for the whole project.
Yep, got it.
Yeah, for preliminary.
Can can we potentially do the same thing for the other two items, just to get a general poll from the planning board on if they would be willing and receptive to the increased grade? I guess we discussed, we'll do that onsite maybe. And then that that setback, that really impacts how we design that access road down there.
Yep.
So it'd be just to get a general idea. Again, understand you don't want to vote on it tonight, but it it'd just be good to understand.
Yeah, I, when I first saw the map, I I thought we were talking about the whole road out to the to the hot tub sauna area, and I thought that was way too much. What I've seen from the map, my inclination is to go with the road that already exists and allow that. But I I would, that one, I, you know, I just, the only thing I would be worried about is is when you make that an impervious surface and then what the drainage around that looks like as far as it flows towards the brook, because you.
No, it'll. It'll. It'll all be pitched in. That that was my original thought.
That's what we need to know, right?
Pitch it away from that so that we can collect it, treat it, and then send it back on a note safely.
And even, no, I I mean, I'm I'm always in favor of using existing infrastructure when possible, and that one, I'm also thinking that may help runoff during construction if it's angled away from the grade. What? We didn't really talk about it. What will the surface be of the roads? Do you know yet? Gravel, okay, so not tar.
Yeah. Mark, anything?
No, I'm.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
One stretch and and that. So generally, yes.
Wonderful. That's that's all we need to kind of move forward.
And then as far as the other one, which was the slope of or the grade of the road, again, your goal here is to avoid disturbing more.
That is to minimize the road area by getting us above grades.
As long as it meets the requirements that are allowed within the ordinance, et cetera, I I wouldn't have any objection to that. Anyone else?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, working with, working with the topography rather than trying to change it.
Wonderful. No, that's very helpful.
Yep, and I'll go up how Hill Road before we go to this site. Bring your fixie bike.
I'll let you know if I get home.